Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome everybody here today to our September 1st, 2022 board meeting. And welcome everybody here that's in the virtual world also. First item on the agenda is the indication and pass to Lee Farmer.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'll pray for you.
Thank you, sir.
Gracious God, thank you for the opportunity we have been given to live in such a great community. Thank you for our Board of Supervisors who have answered the call to serve the people. Tonight, Lord, as they conduct the people's business, I pray that you give them wisdom and they lead with that wisdom and compassion. For it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance, and I'd like to ask Dr. Holly Walgoe to lead us in that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? If we do not, can I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. We have four sets. We have minutes from August 11th, 2022, August 3rd, 2022, July 20th, 2022, and July 14th, 2022. Are there any changes or deletions to those minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve them?
Don't move.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next we have presentations. We have a resolution for Fire Prevention Week. I'll let Mr. Basie take over on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution for Fire Prevention Week, whereas every year since 1922, Fire Prevention Week is observed to commemorate the great Chicago fire that took place on October 8th, 1871. And whereas this year, we recognize the 100th anniversary, making it the longest-running public health and safety observance in our country. Whereas Fire Prevention Week touches the heart of many, even more so this year because of two devastating fires that occurred in Kilkonne and Tappahannock. And whereas we recognize the efforts that all firefighters, fire service agencies, and other first responders that aid in preventing and combating fire dangers. And whereas we thank them for their dedication, sacrifice, hard work, and putting their lives on the line for the sake of our community. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively reinforces the importance of developing a fire escape plan with all members of the household and/or agency and practicing it regularly. Therefore, the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week, and we urge all citizens of Northumberland County to create a safe fire escape plan, preparing for unforeseen fires that can easily occur.
Don't move.
All right. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here? See, we have some people here from the fire department here.
We got two chiefs.
Yeah. We got two different fire departments, I think. Both these, both the fire departments, and thank y'all very much for your service. Very needed service. Amen. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the resolution for First Responders Day.
Northumberland County First Responders Day Resolution. Whereas first responders often risk their lives and safety in the performance of their duties. And whereas first responders are our first and best defense against all emergencies that threaten our community. And whereas first responders are highly trained, specialized workers who contribute their excellent skills for the public good. And whereas first responders sacrifice much of their personal time with family and friends to ensure the safety of our community. And whereas first responders, whether career volunteer or selflessly provide a vital public service for the Northumberland community. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that on 11th day of September, that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors, as does the state of Virginia, recognize First Responders Day and hereby thanks Callio Volunteer Rescue Squad, Mid-County Volunteer Rescue Squad, Northumberland Rescue Squad, Callio Volunteer Fire Department, Fairfield's Volunteer Fire Department, Smith Point Sea Rescue, Northumberland Sheriff's Office, Northumberland Department of Emergency Services, and other organizations in the Public Safety Sector for their service and sacrifice to our community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Basie. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Second. I got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I got a whole handful of them here, so please come on up. Everybody come on, please. Mr. Jack, can you help me with something? Fine. You want to help me with something?
Mm-mm. You don't. You have a crowd up there, but I'll see. Five. Six of them. We're going to help him. God, that boy, he scared there.
I put this on Facebook.
You want to get around his side?
That's going to play off of Chris's head, Sean.
I'll be right beside him.
Take your time. Take your time.
Garfield. Garfield is late.
I will get you back.
Come on up, Garfield.
Pat's on the call. Coming back on the call.
All same. All of us same. I'd like to thank everyone here for the service that you do. I know you're volunteers. Go ahead and pray, help us. Help the citizens here if you can. All appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Forgot one, Richard. Garfield. Come on up. Get yours.
He shook his head no when he called me in. He wasn't.
How you doing?
You know I want to let you escape.
He's back in the morning.
All right.
Mr. Beal?
I don't know how much I helped. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We've completed brush cutting on Bluff Point Road and on 360, we patched potholes on Fruit Plain and Bogey Neck and throughout the county. We cleaned ditches on Fruit Plain, cleaned pipes on 360, Georgetown, Riverview, and Fox Point. We mowed all the primary routes and picked up all the litter, and we've addressed work orders countywide. Upcoming, we have some ditch cleaning planned on 200. Planning to cut brush while we're there on 200. We'll continue to patch potholes. We have some shoulder repairs on various routes, and we'll continue to clean pipes and address work orders. Also, we've ordered all the secondary routes to be mowed starting the second week of September, so that'll be the final mow on all the secondary routes. The pipe on 360, I was able to get that right-of-entry signed, and we've issued a purchase order for that, and I'm waiting on a schedule from the contractor. He did tell me he's going to be at King George working on a pipe for me the second week of September, so I don't anticipate him to be here. It'll probably be October or November before he gets down here, but we're good there. The pavement schedule, surface treatment should be done in the next couple of weeks. Cape Seal, we're still waiting on the permanent striping on Louisetta. And on the plant mix schedule, they've made a little bit of progress, but only a little bit on the permanent striping. Both sections of 360 are still waiting on either permanent striping or removing reflectors and putting in turn arrows. So still some more work to do there. On the structure and bridge section, the scour repair, we've been talking about those for a while. Those 604 and 605 are out to bid, and those bids are due September 28. We did receive a request from Luttrell regarding no parking signs in front of the Comerco Parish Church. I just wanted to confirm with the board that is something you want us to proceed with.
Mr. Penny, the junior warden requested that. Because it's got the area where you also got some turning left to go on Brown Store Road, and it Sunday, well, anytime there's a church service, it really pushes things by. There's been at least one accident that I'm aware of, but it's just look at it, and it's a concern. Obviously, the church, Mr. Penny can talk to you more if you wish.
We spoke before the meeting. I was just making sure something, whenever you restrict something, some people are happy, some people aren't.
I wasn't going to put this, they put it forward, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Now, so, that's.
Yes.
That's all I had. Do you have anything for me?
I have several things. Well, the chairman's doing his own. The permanent striping, well, right there in Burgess, 360, 200, but as you're heading west on 360, you've got two lanes there. Is there going to be any marking to tell them to get over? Because right now I-
Just to put the turn arrows in at the signal.
Right. Because I've had in the past two weeks, I've seen one car who normally would be turning, going ahead, and that's an accident waiting to happen. I wasn't sure what's, especially now that you've re-striped it, they've got to come over. But I just want to make sure we're going to get that one straight. The other thing is Remo Road, specifically 245 Remo Road, there have been several accidents. It's on a left-hand turn, and people are forgetting to make the turn. The guy has lost the mailbox, he's lost the fence, he lost, that within the past month. And I'm not sure what you can do, since it's a bunch of houses there, maybe, you know, a caution left turn sign or something, but there's been several accidents right on that corner. They just not making the turn, for whatever reason. I'm not saying it might not be impaired to them, but there is a concern, because he's just starting to put his fence up, fence along the front, and that gets wiped out. But anything to help either slow him down or let him know it's coming, that's all I can say.
Okay. I'll look into it.
And the last thing I saw on the rabbinic records, Justin Jason is here, the smart goals of Pinkertonville, Carson Road, and Crawford's Corner. I don't have a problem, that's a county road. Crawford's Corner and Carson, that's the Northumberland County line. Does Northumberland County need to add in or voice any support which would help them?
I don't think it hurts. I don't think you necessarily have to. The road is shifting to the west if it gets approved, and that's if.
Right.
I don't think it hurts. It doesn't help the score one way or the other, as long as it screens.
I didn't want this to go hurt, that's the biggest thing.
Yeah. No, it wouldn't affect anything, as long as it screens in, which it apparently is going to. But if the county's willing to support the application, I don't think it hurts anything.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send a letter. Do you want it to yourself, or who would you want it to?
You can send it to my attention.
I make a motion that we send a letter to Mr. Beal, supporting Lancaster's request on the Crawford's Corner, Carson Road, and Pinkertonville coming in as a bad angle, try to help that straighten out some.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Jimmy?
Have anything?
Jim, you got anything? What's long?
No.
All right. I don't have anything, Mr. Beal.
All right. Thank you all. We-
Thank you, sir. All right. Next is an update from Northumberland County Schools. That'd be Dr. Walgoe and Jason.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. We are finishing our second week of school, and our ADM right now is at about 1,205 students, which is up. We have provided you with a message for this week, and we gave you some weekly updates, including cross-country. You have a recap on that. They had a meet this week. We also held middle school taste testing, which is a new, we're bringing that to the middle and high, which is nice, the students can give their voice in their meals. Marching band is spreading school spirit, not only at football games, but also during the school day. We had a kickoff carnival last Friday night. It was a major success, and that was sponsored by the SCA. The carnival was held prior to the football game against Lancaster. We had a win against Lancaster. You can see photos of the varsity football team and other updates, including encouraging all families to send their students to school every day. Time in school every day really helps students with their learning goals. Following that, you have the announcement that all of our schools are fully accredited. We're very proud of that. And we have begun our safety drills for the year. We do partner with our SROs and our local sheriff's office on our safety drills, and you have calendar updates. And Mr. Bellows has some updates for you, too. Please be reminded that September 12th is our next school board meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I presented you with a copy of the school fund operations audit. We had a successful audit with no letters of management, so we're excited about that. Also, to follow up on the enrollment increase, that's a pretty big enrollment increase. That's pretty much back to the pre-pandemic number we had, because it had gone down to about 1126 last year, what we based our budget on. So the fact that it's gone up to 1,200 again is a good thing for the budget. Do you all have anything else for us tonight?
You said your enrollment, so how much of what you budgeted for?
We have, the budget was set for 1126, and we're at 1,205 currently, so that's a pretty good increase. It's basically back to the original number that we had, pre-pandemic, as about 1,200 is our enrollment.
Okay.
A lot of our pre-K and kindergarten students have returned. We saw a big dip in those numbers during the pandemic years. And we'll bring those ADM reports to you, because we'll be closely monitoring those. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our report.
All right. And board members have any questions?
How many kids do we have at the vote count?
Mr. Long, I believe we have about 50, but I didn't bring that with me, but, you know, I haven't seen that number recently.
How about the STEM program? Don't, we have kids up there, too?
Yes, absolutely. And we offer other courses in-house for STEM as well. But I can bring you those numbers at your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions?
You said you mentioned you all were practicing your drills and all of that, just for curiosity. Do you, do you have, does the school system have a reunification plan?
We actually are establishing a safety committee that's going to meet monthly, and we will be working on that reunification plan. We have, I would call it a rough draft, but we definitely want to partner with the sheriff's office, and that reunification would offer different options. We can't predict everything, but if we had options, I don't think there's one, one-size-fits-all answer, but we will come up with options for reunification.
Okay.
We did send a team to the recent safety conference, so they came back with a lot of ideas and recommendations as well.
That's all I have.
Tom?
I want to thank you for providing this. Until you became superintendent, I never saw this.
Absolutely.
And it shows you the various activities, the funds, and most importantly, no management letters, too. But this was not available until you got here.
Thank you.
And we're, obviously, the county's paying for it for the audit, but it's also good news, and anybody who really takes the time to look at it can see the various activities and what they do with their monies and everything, too.
Yes, and I have to thank our financial administrative assistants under the leadership of Mr. Bellows. They're instrumental, and they're very, very good at what they do. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin.
How would fill all our positions?
This past, I want to say Tuesday, we had a special called School Board Meeting. We hired a high school English teacher. We still have a Spanish vacancy, a keyboarding vacancy, as well as a special education vacancy. So it's Spanish, keyboarding, and special education.
I think the special education is even an extra higher from the Esser funds.
Yes.
It's one of our grant-funded positions.
Other questions?
Ronnie, you got it, Tony?
No.
What do you got? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Glad to see y'all, too.
Yep.
What's our next school board meeting? Joint meeting?
Not until, was it November?
November?
Yeah.
It was September. I'm just wondering. When's our next joint school board meeting?
I think I might have over, and I'll message Mr. Caplock.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
No problem.
November 2nd. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the county administrator's report. I'll turn that over to you.
The first item I have is a need of motion to transfer some funds from the IT Department, 1401, 3005, in the amount of $2,004.69 to the sheriff's office, 3102, 5203, to cover the upgrade to the internet for the sheriff's office.
Don't move.
All right. Got a motion, got a second?
Only question I have is, what is your internet provider?
Who or what?
Who?
Freehold.
They need to do a lot of upgrading, like the other night. Of course, that was beyond them, when somebody cuts a cable or whatever, but, so, good luck with that.
All right. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Next item I have is the emergency operations plan. Of course, the emergency operation plan needs to be reviewed every four years, so it is due, it's actually due now. There are two resolutions. One is for the National Incident Management System, which is the NIMS, and we have a resolution in there to re-adopt that resolution, and then the actual resolution for the emergency operations plan itself.
Everybody had a chance to review the plans?
On page seven, under the recovery operations, you reference a COOP plan. Do we have our COOP plan, or are we in the process of creating?
We do have a draft COOP plan. And we are in the process, I'm discussing that with Chief Packet, but we haven't finalized that, but we do have a draft.
And I think he went back and fixed everything else.
That you had produced, yes, sir.
All right. Excuse me. Any other board members have any questions?
The only question I have is the resolution on the National Incident Command. The question I have is how many of the rescue squads, fire departments, have members who are NIMS-trained? You can have a system, but if you're not trained doing it, it's not going to do any good. I know it's been a push, at least in the rescue squads, to get it done, I'm sure fire department, too, but if they don't understand who is in charge, so to speak, like 600, or Chief One, or whatever, they have to understand that. Now, for any new, I know any new EMT, that's part of their requirement, but I think that needs to be encouraged, not forced, but encouraged in the various departments. And it might have something to do with grant funding, too. So, I think we just need to encourage it.
All right. Is that all?
That's all.
Anyone else have any comments? All right. No other comments, so what's the pleasure to board?
I move that we approve the final draft of the emergency operations plan and also the resolution, National Incident Management.
Second.
All right. We got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Go ahead, Luttrell.
All right. Next item I had received was from Chief Packet, and he would like to apply for a grant through the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund, and this would be for a 50/50 grant. If we do receive that, we would be using for the county's portion EMS billing monies. And at this point, we're just asking for permission to move forward and apply for the grant funding.
Don't move.
Second.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Excuse me. If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Next item I have is related to the Aeon units. As you know, we've been trying to upgrade those to get us through the humid season. The last bit of work that Hobbs and Associates provided, they did notice some additional work that needed to be conducted on those units. Put that email into your packet, and that's about $9,500 to do the additional work on the delta controllers that they're recommending.
Any discussion? My opinion is we wait. We are three to four weeks before parts would arrive at the earliest. We passed the humidity season. The system is functioning. Let's see what's going to happen in the near future, wherever we're going to make, have other arrangements with that system. I think we just hold off.
For me, you got more experience than I do.
If that's all right. If that's all right with the rest of the board. I'm, I'm just voicing my opinion, that's all. Gone on your experience. All right. Mr. Tadlock, we're just going, just going to hold off on that one.
All right, that's no problem. All right. Next item I have is a request from the Sanitary District. The current portable pump, Godwin Pump, that they have is a 1989 model, and they are having fuel pump issues with that. Mr. Wooler did provide some information as far as the cost on a new pump, and there is a, some information in your packet regarding a used pump in your, your packet as well. I'm not sure how the, the board would like to proceed on that matter.
The information on that new pump, I see a date of October 15, 2020. I know that's way off. And pricing is way off, so. You say the other one has a fuel pump issue? We can't get a fuel pump for it?
I, I think it's a, since it's an older one, I'm not sure if it's, they're having hard problems getting parts for that, that particular pump.
Can you find additional information on that?
Mr. Wooler.
Oh, he's here. Come, I'm, I'm sorry. He's all dressed all up tonight, I didn't recognize him.
Yes, currently, the reason behind this is that, um, last week, one of our generators that we, we all approved to replace the generator, um, the generators lost a water pump. And since last week, we have no, have no backup power, backup pumping at that lift station. So at the process, we were trying to put our backup pump in place, which is just manual operation. So if we lose power at the pump station, then the employees got to stay there with it. That backup pump is unreparable. It's not worth putting the money in.
No, that's what I wanted to know.
And right now, um, like I said, this generator is slated to be installed in March of '23. We, y'all approved that back in the previous fiscal, or fiscal budget, and it was roughly a 42-week lead time for a generator. So it's nothing being said that we are going to see this generator in, in March, that's what they're shooting for. So, um, these pump stations are vital. If we do happen to get a hurricane and lose power, this, this pump can be used at any one of our lift stations to get the service from one place to another, even if the pump station happens to completely go down for any type of reason. So, um, I've, and also, the, the reason why I didn't upgrade a new, have a new price quote is that if y'all did approve a new one tonight, you're looking at maybe a year. So we were lucky enough to find a used one that's had a lot of work done to it, and it should be just as new.
So your opinion of the used one, we would be okay to purchase that?
It'll be everything that we had in that, in that quote, and reference to hose, adapters, and everything that we would need.
Okay.
And it's been updated to the new features for the float packages and everything.
All right. All right, that's what, that's what I was wondering about.
At half the cost.
Yeah, half the cost.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion that we purchase that used, uh, pump.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Is it still available to your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
That was number two.
Yeah. Yeah. And how long, and how long before they could deliver or you pick up?
It's looking like we should have it, um, probably in 10 days.
10 days? All right. All right, any other discussion?
Ms. Chairman, two things. Does the board also want to include the warranty on that as well? I believe that was, what, 999?
Yes, I think.
Additional dollars.
And what would you do, Dave?
I would go ahead and include it.
All right, I amend my motion to include the warranty also. If that's all right.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
Any idea why it takes so long to get one of these generators?
It's with everything.
Oh, it's just the supply chain?
It's just the supply chain, it's not there. I mean, it's, it's really affecting a lot of things.
I didn't think they'd have that kind of demand, but if they don't have the supply issues.
It got a little better, but it's, it's going right back downhill again.
Thank you.
Good Jackson, you're specific.
All right, Dan. Latrell, you keep on.
Ms. Chairman, the only thing, other thing on that is that we do have a little bit more ARPA monies remaining that we can use the ARPA funds for that, that unit, so.
For that pump?
For that pump. Yes, sir. Just to make the board aware.
All right.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
All right, our next item on the list is board comments. Start with you, Mr. Long.
Mr. Tadlock, uh, the school, how's their roof coming along? Top of the, the School Board building?
For the EVB bank?
Yes.
We just need a decision as far as how the board would like to proceed. We had the presentation from Dave Liebel, the engineer, and so it's just a matter of proceeding from that, that discussion.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Brian?
Just to give a little update, I met with Mr. Becker from the Tavern. Had a discussion. The Tavern has, first weekend of December, a full day of all kinds of Christmas celebration. And we're looking to expand that into the evening. We're looking to have and ask the homeowners and business owners of Heathsville area to, to decorate. And we got a few more, uh, things in mind. Folks from the Tavern are willing to help decorate in front, courthouse and all. But we're also going to be sending out a flyer asking for help from churches and any citizen that would like to come and help and participate with this program together. We were looking at a parade, and whatever we decided on a parade, it was, it would interfere with someone else's activities. So figured we'd piggyback off of what the Tavern does during the day, extend it on into the evening, try to get some community and church involvement, and we'll see where it goes this year. And if it works out well, we'll continue to do it and grow a little more next year. And I'll keep the board updated as we make a little progress, a little more progress with it. That's all I got.
All right. Mr. Tomlin?
Mr. Gregory, do you have a chance to look into the prospect of referendum, bond referendums?
I did, Mr. Tomlin. Happy to report on that now, it'll only take a couple of minutes. Mr. Tomlin, the chairman, member of the board, issuance of debt in the form of, thank you, general obligation bonds, which are GO bonds, general obligation bonds are different than revenue bonds. Revenue bonds being, uh, for the purpose of doing a specific project that's, that, that can generate revenue, pay for those bonds, like utility projects, of course. But GO bonds are, are governed by the, for Virginia counties, are to finance local projects, and they're governed by Article 7, Section 10 of the Constitution of Virginia, and Section 15.2, 2638D of the Code of Virginia. Counties can only issue GO bonds, except in this, in the case of school projects with specified conditions requiring the sale of such bonds to special fin, school financing agencies here in the state, and refunding bonds, which are a distinct type, if approved by the voters of the county in a referendum, as you know. So conducting a GO bond referendum process requires, number one, the Board of Supervisors must consider and approve a resolution requesting the Circuit Court judge to order a special election to approve the bonds to be issued for the specified purposes, or purpose. Number two, the referendum could be scheduled for the same day as the general election, or a special election date could be set. A referendum election must be ordered at least 81 days prior to the date for which the referendum election is called. Okay, so it would be too late to schedule one for this upcoming general election in November.
Right.
Number three, the court order calling the referendum must set the question to appear on the ballot in plain English. You know, you got to just set the issue very plainly before the voters. The election has to be held within a reasonable amount of time after the request submitted by the board, and a copy of the court order must be sent immediately to the State Board of Elections by the clerk of the court. The referendum ballot must state the question as follows, something to this effect. Shall the county of X, Northumberland, in this case, issue general obligation bonds to fund Project Y in the amount of a certain number of dollars? And then have a yes block, or in a no block, for voting purposes. If the referendum is approved by a majority of the voters, the county may proceed to issue the bonds to fund the project. Projects typically financed by GO bonds include courthouses, schools, county administration facilities, park facilities, community centers, or other capital projects, such as the one I believe you, you have in mind. Happy to answer any questions to the extent I'm able, and.
No, I answered my question. The timing was one question, and I knew we were passed for the, the general election.
Right, but this, the special election can be held at any time, as long as the timing works out.
Right.
All right. Anybody else got any questions? Or comments? I don't have anything either. All right, our next item on the agenda is, I would, I request a motion to go into closed meeting.
Do you want to read the motion?
Yeah, let Mr. Tadlock read it.
Then whatever you said.
Need a motion for the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors to convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1 for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, Section 2.23711A3 for the discussion or consideration of the potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the potential disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary in their presence, will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA Section 2.23712F.
All right.
You ordered it.
No, I'll, I'll let you have it. I'll second Ronnie's.
All right, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we will go into closed meeting in the next room. We'll hope you'll be back very soon. I entertain a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Don't move.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Do you want a roll call vote now?
You want to vote on the motion, then the roll?
Vote on it, yeah, then we'll get roll call, yeah. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we need a, we need a motion that we didn't say anything that was, or discuss anything that we shouldn't. Roll call vote on that, unless you have the right language.
Yeah, I've got the, need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were hard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I move what he's in. All right, we got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All right. Now, we'll start off with Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Mr. Jett?
Aye.
Tanyi, aye. All right. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we're back. Welcome you here tonight. Our next item on the agenda is the public comment period. And we have a few people here signed up to speak. Our first one is Denise Masick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Denise Masick, 76th Farm, Nor Lane, Kilmarnock, Virginia. One review of the Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. The EVB building's roof has been a topic of discussion for well over a year. February 11, 2021, Mr. Long asked if the board intended to fix the roof or build a new building. March 11, 2021, Mr. Long asked about the building again, and Mr. Tadlock asked for board direction. 8/25/2021, Mr. Long asked again, and was told that bids for a roof would be solicited. 10/14/2021, Mr. Long asked again, and a statement was made that RFPs were received and interviews would begin. 12/9/2021, Mr. Long asked again, and the statement was recorded that RFPs for architectural services would be conducted for other county offices going into the old bank. Minutes from the Planning Commission meeting on 2/17/22 reflect a statement from Patrick O'Brien that the School Board has enough money squirreled away to fix the old EVB roof, and that if the county has to pay to fix the roof, it will hurt the taxpayers. Mr. Richard Haney told the Planning Commission that the old EVB roof will cost $400,000. At the 4/21/22 meeting, members of the Planning Commission did not include the old EVB roof in its capital improvement target list of items. Our School Board employees were moved from one hazardous environment in Lottesburg right into another one in Heathsville. The roof continues to leak, especially into the office of the payroll specialist. She has dirty water leaking into a bucket, and the room smells of mold and mildew. She has routinely experienced respiratory illness. This problem is not going away, and the discussion has gone on long enough, including a statement tonight regarding that same roof. It's time to replace that roof. On another note, I have received a call from a person who is interested in the Lottesburg school property. She was told that the School Board was to hold up in your board making a decision on the sale or lease of the building. As a School Board member, I was a part of the decision to return that property to the county, September 2021. If I or we still need to do something for this transaction to be completed, we need to know, School Board. And/or, if you don't want the property, we need to know that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person to speak is Blake Cox.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Blake Cox. I'm one of the founders of a new nonprofit organization called Energy Right. I founded Energy Right to encourage and educate around energy developed the right way on the local level with a focus on property rights, conservative ideals, including in all of the above, energy strategy. We want to ensure there's a common sense voice at the local level when energy discussions take place. So first, I would like to commend you for taking the time to get a solar ordinance in place so landowners may move forward with these types of projects. The ordinance incorporates setbacks, preservation of growth areas, decommissioning rules, all hallmarks of a good policy. The ordinance you have all put together is a huge win for the property rights of landowners, while also addressing the concerns of your community. I want to focus my remarks tonight on the economics of bringing a solar project to Northumberland because of the profound community benefits associated with solar projects. County has the potential to tax land used with solar up to 10 or more times what land outside of a solar project can be taxed, and that will benefit every resident of the county. This additional tax revenue causes no strain on public services like other types of development due demand. These tax dollars can help the county lower taxes on citizens, go to repairing roads, infrastructure, funding our schools, or our first responders. infrastructure, funding our schools, or our first responders. But not only can these projects boost your local tax base, but also be a huge benefit for local businesses. From a lawn care business, to your local hardware store, to even a food truck, so many local businesses stand to gain from these projects. So passing smart and responsible solar projects doesn't just mean one person benefit. From the county government, to citizens, to local businesses, they all stand to benefit from seeing solar done the right way. So I would urge you to move forward in the consideration of the approval of solar developments in Northumberland so landowners may move forward with these projects, and the benefit of energy development may be fully realized by the county. Thanks so much for your time tonight.
All right, thank you. Next person is Mike Borkowski.
Hi, my name is Mike Borkowski with Community Power Group, and just wanted to speak. I know there's certain farms that are being considered here in the county of Northumberland. In a variety of discussions, there is a lot of misinformation out there with regards to solar here in the county. We hear different things like it'll increase runoff, or, you know, introduce heavy metals, or, you know, speak to things like, you know, what happens with it at the end of the life of the panels? And so just wanted to highlight and thank the board and the community for putting together a strong set of ordinances that actually address those things up front, like requiring decommissioning bonds to ensure that these solar facilities are, there are funds available to ensure that they're removed at the end of the life, for, you know, having detailed requirements and thoughts, and compliments to the governor of Virginia who implemented very strong stormwater management procedures in, for things like solar, which actually in most instances reduce runoff, because you have year-round ground cover now versus ground cover that is only there for a part of the year. It also cleans the runoff, because now that runoff, instead of having things like nitrogen or Roundup in them that go directly into the bay, a solar farm takes that many acres out of that situation, and therefore, any water that does end up making it to the bay as a result of that, a solar farm are cleaner. There's also things like having, you know, talk of heavy metals. If you go on the web, you see those types of items talked about, but those are thin film solar panels, which are not used here in Virginia at all. They're used in some instances in the Southwest, and Nevada, and Arizona, and other places. Those types of things are not being utilized in projects here in Maryland, in Virginia. They, in those panels, they have things like wafers, which is a, no different than just thin film wafers, they're not toxic in any way, shape, or form. So, anyway, my compliments to a very thoughtful code that addresses many of these items up front, and to the extent there are any other questions later, I'm available for any answers.
All right, thank you, sir. Next person to speak is Troya Haney.
Hi, I'm Troya Haney, and I do not agree with solar panels farms, and I don't agree with solar panels in general, but I believe that they are a, an issue that we're going to have to deal with for many, many years. The materials made for a solar panel last approximately 20 years, 25 to 30 years. The previous assumptions are such that lead to carcinogenic cadmium can be most completely washed out of the fragments of the solar modules over a period of several months. So the things that are inside the solar panels can leak out into the groundwater. And if you look at the, portray, the proposal for the site at, on Fairport Road, it is right next to Waste Creek. So you're talking about these chemicals coming down through the groundwater into Waste Creek to contaminate it. Like you're saying that that isn't what, they're not made with those carcinogens or toxic chemicals, but there's contrary evidence that there is. So is that not a true statement?
Ms. Haney, the public hearing on the solar project there is closed.
Oh, it is?
Now, you can talk about solar, but you cannot mention that project.
That project, okay. Well, I'm sorry. Well, I disagree with it. I think that that's, it's a toxic waste problem. It's also an eyesore. And I'm sorry, I did not understand it was already closed.
Yeah. Public hearing is closed. You can talk about solar in general.
In general.
But not that project.
Not that project, okay. Well, it's not much point if it's already closed.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is Maurice Johnson.
Maurice Johnson, Timberline Drive, Reville. Yesterday, I wasn't expecting to talk, but I'm having a problem with my mother-in-law. See, she's been dead since 2018, June of 2018 to be exact, and every year, local elections sends her documentation. But yesterday, she got a new voter ID. To me, recognizing that statistically I'm not unique in this county, that suggests that maybe there's dead people on our voter rolls. And so what I'm saying here tonight is that I don't want my mother, mother-in-law's ghost vote going around. I don't want somebody to make sure that the voter rolls in Northumberland County are clean. So I want the Board of Supervisors to get with elections, do whatever it takes to answer a couple of questions. How many dead people are on the voter rolls? How many people don't live here anymore? And when was the last time that any of those people actually voted? And you find something unfavorable when you do the research, and I'd be happy to contribute some time to that research. But when you find something unfavorable, take further action. And this is a demand. I'm not going to take no for an answer. I didn't expect to have to talk today, but here it is. That's all.
All right, thank you. Next person is James Penny.
James Penny, 125 River Hill Road, Heatsville, Virginia. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to speak. Comment deals with solar, in essence. Two relatively quick comments. California was probably one of the most forerunner groups to start putting in solar collectors. They are now reaching their end of life. They are seeing tremendous quantities of panels that require recycling. Now, California, due to its ground laws, or ground pollution laws, does not have a firm in the state that will take and break them down. They have to ship them out of the state, and they are so deluged, they've stopped taking additional panels to break down. Food for thought. The second item, allow me to check my notes. California power grid, right now, and it's in the news, has declared a power emergency, in essence, through Labor Day, that says you can, you have to set your thermostats to 78 degrees. Oh, and by the way, all those electric vehicles, you can't charge them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. All right, next person is Dave Luckritz.
Dave Luckritz, 361 Old Fairport Road. I did not realize you couldn't make a, I would just, I'd like to make a comment in regard to where I live, how's that, instead of the solar. Appreciate tonight speaking with Mike. He did answer some concerns and questions that I had in regard to that. The concern would be over Fairport Road itself. It's the only road we've got coming into our community of 100 homes or more. You've got three marines, a restaurant, a lot of, lot of trucks and cars going down there. So when it, if it does get approved and construction is done, they need to be concerned over how they get all the equipment in and everything else. You've got emergency vehicles that need to get in and out. So we just want to be concerned that anything, anything that would be tied up, or blocking the roads, or anything like that, there's some way that they can do away with that. I do appreciate Mike. He answered questions in regard to the EPA, and decommissioning, and all that in the plan. That was not introduced last time, so do appreciate his concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person is Kenny Pinkert.
And Mr. Chair, I would just like to speak to solar in general. My name's Ken Pinkert, 336 Greenfield Road, Reville, Virginia. Retired, retired fisherman, as well as retired USCW Local 400 Vice President. But being a, being with the union afforded me time to travel. And I'm from, from December to the time I both went back, I've known was on the road for the union. And over 30, 30 years, when I first started, you saw maybe one, two electric cars. Over the last five years on the highway, you would see 100 times that. But as well as that, I started seeing fields. I would drive out to Kansas City, in different areas, to conferences and things, and I would see Indiana and stuff, you would see fields, and they had corn in them, and things like that. And I started seeing these panels. And I started taking notice to the panels, and I saw them everywhere, and it is the wave of the future. It's clean energy, and I, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next person is Ricky Haney.
Good evening, Ricky Haney, 1015 Waste Creek Road. As one of the gentlemen was just commenting about California, I don't know what's going on in California, but I do know what's going on in Virginia. I'm involved in a project now that's going to last for 10 years, cleaning up the James River, because all the coal that they burn to generate, to generate power, electricity, they put it in the ground, and the liner has ruptured, and it's running right down into James River. So like I said, I don't know about what's going on in California, but I do know it's time for us to look at renewable energy. It is, the county, I'm glad to see them write good ordinance, because I think the county needs to protect its, itself, and protect anyone who decides that they might want to put their land in this. The benefit is, the tax revenue from solar is a lot greater. I know in my experiences, using fertilizers, most of this county, all the fields lead to the bay. And when you start putting, you know, 200 pounds of nitrogen each year on a crop, or you start putting all of these toxic herbicides and insecticides, I don't care what practice you use, some of that ends up getting in the bay. I think that we need to make decisions based on facts. Because someone doesn't want to look at something, or it's not pleasant for them to see, or it's not pretty to them, it's not the right to deny another individual of what to do with his or her property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is PJ Haney.
PJ Haney, 1900 Waste Creek Road. I'm a fifth-generation farmer. I'm born here, most of y'all know me. I've farmed these fields in the county all my life. Traveling has allowed me to really see a lot of opportunities, and how other parts of the world are taking advantage of it. Clean energy is a wave of the future, and if you don't know it, the train is coming. When we look at how other parts of the world feed and fuel and provide fiber to themselves, it's, it's a train that's coming. And I once was told there are three options. You can get on the train, you can watch the train go by, or you can get run over by the train. I think when we look at right now, we are charged with feeding 5 billion people globally a day right now. By the year 2050, that's projected to reach 7 billion. When we look at how many additional homes and residences and infrastructures is going to take place to, to meet that demand of people, that's something we have to consider. You know, if we look at the revenue benefits of this product, of any project that would benefit the county, you know, if we were standing here talking about a subdivision with 200 homes, we wouldn't have this conversation. But those 200 homes, and the cars, and the impact on the roads, and the counties would also be a big factor to weigh in. You know, we're looking at open fields and farmland that's marginal, that can be a benefit. And as a farmland owner, I think it's important that people who own property have the options to choose what they desire to do with it. So I'd just like that the county and the people here to be open-minded, look around to see what neighboring counties are doing, see what other parts of the world, and don't let the train go by. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is Dwight Hasner, Hosner.
Hasler.
Hasler. All right.
My name's Dwight Hasler. I live at 182 Creekway Lane in Reville, Virginia. I've heard a lot tonight about solar. Some of my questions I had about solar have been answered. Some of them haven't, and I don't think there ever will be until the future comes and we see really what the impact of solar is going to be. But I do know a couple of things. We talk about revenue, we talk about owning land, and I agree with you. I may not be able to do anything with land once too. But I think also, every farmer in this county, and each one of you supervisors, and everybody back on that back row that has elected or paid to be a part of this county, needs to very carefully considerations impacts that this might have in the future, and if it does go negative, which more likely it is, there's too much out there that says that it does. One thing is the recycling, one thing is the, you've got to go get all these raw minerals out of the ground. Another thing, big thing, to me, and I know it is a bunch of them, most of this stuff's come from China. It may be made in the United States, but it's being produced in China. We have enough problem with China right now. But I'd like for you gentlemen to take into consideration just one thing. Think about this before you make your minds tonight. Is this project something you could be proud of in the future? Or is this product something that your children might say, Daddy, you messed up on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anybody else on the sign-up sheet, but would anybody else like to comment? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Paul Rensel, 129 Creekway Lane, and a lot being said this evening about solar, and, yeah, solar is definitely coming, and it's a thing of the future. But I think the county needs also to weigh where zoning rights should be given for something like this to be built. If you take a look around, a lot of the other counties, they're done more in a commercial zoning area, not a residential area. This is a residential area. And yes, I do agree with you that a man should be able to do what he wants with his property, but looks is everything. I don't think anybody wants to come out of their house, drive out of their driveway, and look at something that is very dis, un, not attractive, just like you don't want to see junk cars sitting on the side of the road, because it's not attractive. I think the county needs to weigh this and come up with a, a long-term plan for solar, maybe talk to some other counties that have plans in place, and implement that for North umberland County. Do it in a cohesive way that people will be proud of, like Dwight said, in the future. You don't want to arbitrarily put something someplace that down the road you're going to regret you did. That's all I have to say.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? I saw a hand up on the backside there.
My name's Rafford Bond, Locomo Church area. I was going to go discuss about the zoning in Locomo Church. The topic's been on.
That hearing's coming up in a, in a little while.
Am I free to speak on my thoughts on that one?
No.
Okay.
Later.
Since I do have.
You can speak when we have the hearing. Anything else you want to speak about?
Okay. Regarding the solar panel, there hadn't been much, or been a lot of stones thrown, I guess, against the farmers on the pollutants with the insecticides, herbicides, heavy fertilization. One of the environmental impacts that hasn't been discussed is that reforestation of our grounds, and it's one of the farming industries that we do have, a major industry. And I think also with that kind of environment, it also helps on the tourism. So aside from this land dying because of overfarming, and we have a lack of natural habitat being destroyed in our county as well, it makes sense to me that we let this land go back to forest. We take advantage of that within the 30 or 40 years and help that other industry, the forest industry, with that. And we would have the wood to build those 200 homes and some other development. And the other concern that had not been put out with solar panels is we're taking very good land that could be used for farming, and we do have billions to feed. And we have paved parking lots, empty buildings, shopping centers with rooftops that so solar panels could very well be placed and not on very valuable farmland or forest land or natural habitat for our environment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, anybody in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak? All right, I will, excuse me, I will close the public comment period. And ladies and gentlemen, we will start our public hearings now. Our first one is a carryover from last month. It's a carryover by Daniel W. Swarley. And we've had the public hearing. Philip, do you have any other additional information for the board to add or anything?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, other than the suggested condition.
All right. So what's the board's decision?
Our mode of would grant the request for a private school with the conditions.
Philip, would you read the conditions?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions, if approved, are all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the Virginia Department of Health. The use of a vault privy is approved by the board supervisor, as shown on the site plan, and the building shall comply with the uniform statewide building code, based on the building officials' interpretation.
All right, board members have any other comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
All right. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes, Mr. Swarley. Thank you, sir. Huh?
Hope the building code doesn't impact them.
Yeah. All right, next one is a carryover from last month, August meeting, request by Philip Haney for a conditional, for a conditional use permit for a solar farm. We've had a public hearing. Has, do any of the board members have any comments? And Philip, do you have any suggested conditions for this?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to planned review approvals from the Department of Environmental Quality. Evergreen vegetative screening shall be established, as shown on the revised site plan, with a minimum of a four-foot height when planted. Assurity bond for decommissioning shall be posted by the solar facility operator and/or the property owner prior to obtaining any necessary permits for construction for the solar project in the amount of $144,250, which amount shall be updated and filed with the county every five years to include any increasing costs due to current market rates on estimated cost of decommissioning. The decommissioning plan shall be followed as submitted any application. This project shall be limited to the fenced 26 acres. There shall be a 200-foot setback off of the edge of the right-of-way of Fairport Road. A fire prevention and vegetation management plan agreement shall be established by the solar facility operator and approved by the zoning administrator. A siting agreement shall be established between Community Power Group and Northumberland We also received several proppers. Mr. Chairman, if you would like for me to read those.
Yes, please.
The applicant has proffered to agree to the voluntary revenue sharing with the county once adopted for capital improvement projects at the established rate of $1,400 per megawatt of alternating current for a year. Provide evergreen vegetative screening on the western low side of the facility with a minimum of four-foot height. To help the landowner remove, relocate all tractor trailers and commercial vehicles currently parked along the private driveway adjacent to the solar facility to a screen location prior to facility operation. A 15,000-gallon tank shall be installed and connected to the existing Artesian well on site before facility operation for use by the fire department. And a siting agreement to be reviewed by the board supervisor.
All right, thank you. All right. Any board members have any comments?
I've got a few.
All right.
Under the application, and the way it's brought up for the hearing, it shows that it's three property owners. On the application, it shows it's two property owners, and it's only one signature. Is that application okay? And I guess, Mr. Gregory, is that, that's for you. I just want to make sure everybody's covered.
Could you repeat the question, Mr. Brand? I'm sorry.
On the advertisement for this project, it states it has three property owners. On the application, it's two property owners' names on it, only two. And on the back for the signature line, only one property owner signed.
Well, that does raise a question about the properties, whether it's the two or the three. Now, the signature on the application, that sole property owner could be acting as a representative or the agent of the other property owner. So that's, there's no problem with that.
Okay.
But I would just ask for clarification on the properties of the issue.
No problem on that. And I guess I've got some questions from Mr. Marston. It's in regards to the suggested conditions. Oh, number two, evergreen vegetative screening shall be established, as shown and revised on the site plan, minimum four-foot tall. There's nothing in there, nothing in there stating what about the fence. And it should be. It should be. It says, I've read through the slides, and game fence. Well, that needs to be defined, and that fence needs to be added to the suggested Security bond and decommissioning shall be posted by the solar facility and/or the property owner. And some research that I've done, there's been some situations where the solar company has gone bankrupt, and there's no one that's to secure it. Landowner ought to have just as much responsibility in this as the solar facility, the company. A decommissioning plan shall be followed as submitted in application. Where's this plan? Where's an environmental plan? We talked about being here, big stormwater management measures, but there's no plan. Fire prevention in the vegetation management plan agreement, where is that? Haven't seen it. A siting agreement? Haven't seen that as well. It's a lot here that needs to be put together, and it's not here. And this decommissioning, I'm not against solar, and I'm going to sit here and tell you too, I'm not much on telling somebody what they can do with their property. But when we bring solar in this county, it's got to be done right. If not, it's going to come back and bite us. And the citizens deserve to have it done right, the property owner deserves to have it done right as well. We need to protect everybody involved. And that's just a few things that I see with this. You finish, yeah?
Yes, sir, I'm done.
I'm sure this is not the first solar project that this Community Power Group has undertaken. So I think that the conditions that were mentioned is sufficient for me.
All right. Now, you said the conditions are okay?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments? All right, if you don't have any comments, Mr. Tom, do you have anything?
I've got first a question for our county attorney. Either our condition or the one they suggest mention the siting agreement, but we don't have a siting agreement in front of us.
Correct.
So how do we approve something subject to something that may come in we don't like? Whether it's approved by us or reviewed, and I can tell you, I want approved. But how do we work that? Is it a conditional approval potentially, or what? How does this work?
Well, the condition would require the negotiation of the siting agreement. If that condition isn't met, then they would be out of compliance with their conditional use permit. So that's on the applicant and the county to work out to the satisfaction of the board. Now, the siting agreement approval is conceived of as a separate, not entirely, but a separate process, and you negotiate that, and then you conduct a public hearing, and then it's approved. There's no reason why that process couldn't be undertaken at the same time as a zoning permit application, but...
We're not there, we're not in that prospect right now.
For negotiating the siting agreement?
Yeah, because it wasn't the application and the sighting didn't come at the same time.
Right, so that would have to happen after the fact, obviously, were you to take action on it tonight.
Right.
But of course, you're not under an obligation to do that either.
I know localities can do it as a siting agreement provided it meets all the other ordinance requirements or whatever.
Correct.
Mr. Brand did mention about the surety bond. We just got mail to us yesterday, email, from little Stuart McKenzie, "Decommissioning utility-scale solar facilities, financial best practices for Virginia localities." And this hits home where my concern is, obviously, whether it's California or not, the whole process of solar farms have not really hit their useful life. And we don't know, it's the unknowns that are concerned, especially when it comes to financial. Somebody mentioned would be happy. My concern is, nothing to say, Mr. Haney doesn't already know, he's older than I am. PJ's the youngest one. Is PJ going to be stuck with this financial obligation? Or is it going to fall back on Northumberland County to clean up this situation? I don't want a solar farm EPA-type site. We don't know the problems. Let's just assume there is no environmental problems. But if we don't have the proper financial assurances, then I don't want to pass that liability to my daughter and grandson-to-be when I may not even be here. I have to worry about what might we be doing? And my opinion is, nothing against Mr. Marston, because we're all new at doing this, I can tell you, the surety piece is not strong enough for me. I don't really care about the solar facility being liable. I want the property owner, successor heirs of signs to be liable. And the one thing I glanced at this, I glanced, I did not have a chance to read sixty-some pages since I got it yesterday afternoon. But they do strike base, obviously, of our concern with the financial piece, the decommissioning, and also as it relates to abandonment. It's mentioned in the citing, I mean, the decommissioning, but what constitutes abandonment? But the five-year review of the amount is perfectly fine, but I would want that to be evaluated by an engineer who's licensed at Commonwealth of Virginia to come up with current market-based estimates, and then that is what, because right now, 144,000 in five years, it could be 200,000. So that's my one concern. I know people don't like to see certain things, and I, from the roads I've ridden, I pay a lot more attention to solar farms. But I go to Gloucester, I see a big farm there, but I also see a whole lot more screening going up too. And if you go to Montross, you see a lot of solar panels staring you right in the face, but not a whole lot of screening. They're coming up. Screening is one thing, it'd be nice to have the game fence just to keep the game out of the field. But I really have to be concerned. And then I also go to, I work in Warsaw, so I go the back road sometimes, going up Mayon Road and all like you go into Farina Manor. They are putting in a solar farm right by Northern Nick's substation. But there, so far, they may do some up in the field, but they're cutting the timber, and they are doing a major excavation in there. It won't look like digging a bowl, I don't know. Obviously, I'm not going to trespass to find out. But the land is being altered, to put it mildly. And then to recom, to decommission that, you're going to have so much soil disturbance to potentially get it back to where it was, and you're not going to be able to do it. Now, this property is Zone R2, but there is, you've got the, I think it's Warehouse Creek that comes back up almost to Ways Creek Road. There's a prong that, it's not that far away. I didn't have a chance to Google measure it, but it's within probably 1,000 feet. Now, the land over there is fairly flat. But Mr. Brand has told us in the past, up in Essex County, they had a creek called Muddy Creek, and after a solar screw-up up there, Muddy Creek was a whole lot muddier. But, and also constant fires in their facility. The fact that there's going to be a possible 15,000-gallon tank will help the community plus this in worst-case scenario. But I'm most concerned about the financial impacts potentially for Northumberland County citizen and its taxpayer.
All right, one question to your question there. The 144,250, how did you come up with that number?
That came from their application.
Yeah, but...
I don't know. I don't know, I'm not a professional engineer.
I'm not either, but that is nowhere near enough money.
But I would want the engineer who does this analysis be paid for by the county. So we get some way to make sure, not trying to hammer them, but I want to protect the county citizen.
Well, that's our overall goal, is to protect the county citizen. There's no mention of grass cutting in these conditions. Most of the facilities you see, you have tall grass growed up into them, which is a fire hazard. There's no mention of any training for the fire department here. And if you do have a fire and it goes outside of the compound of a facility, does damage to other property owners, is the solar company gonna be responsible for that damage? And also, are they gonna make a donation to the fire department for coming in and putting that fire out? Fencing, you're talking about a wildlife fence. How tall is that gonna be? How much wildlife is it actually gonna keep out? Well, recycling has all been done, decommissioning. I don't know, it's just a lot of things that need to be discussed before I can support this. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Jett. You got any comments?
I just, as Mr. Tomlin said, on the site plan is a very important part of it. And as you know, we just received the information yesterday. I mean, it just came out yesterday, released by the state of the Welling Cooper. And it's a lot of food for thought in there, and like I said, it's, what, 160-some pages?
Yeah, 60 pages.
60-some pages. I haven't had time to read that at all and absorb what it had to say. But just glancing through it, it's made some good points. And we understand that a site planned agreement has to be a total different public hearing and then voted on.
The site agreement, yeah, not site plan agreement, but...
Yes, siding agreement.
Yes, sir.
Yes, siding agreement, sorry. And that's entirely different?
Well, it'd be related, of course, but it's a separate public hearing process.
Like Tomlin said, putting cart before the horse on it. So just giving them to make sure I understand right. And if we approve the site plan tonight and then the site agreement, I mean, the solar plan tonight, and then the site plan was denied, where are we?
Well, if this site agreement was a required condition imposed upon the approval, part of the CUP approval, and then there was, the siding agreement negotiation failed to reach an agreement and be approved by the board and the applicant, then of course, the CUP would be effectively void, well, they would be in violation of a condition required by the CUP approval. So they would be non-compliant and they would have a zoning violation there. So they wouldn't be in compliance with their approval.
Well, that still raises another issue. We put these conditions on this, how do we enforce them? We may have enough trouble down forcing something on just one landowner.
Yeah, I know.
And we can't do that?
Well, I think you're always gonna have that problem.
This is a much bigger project.
Let me finish, let me finish. We have other projects that we have had problems with, you know? So it's not fair to pick on one project, all right? Because I don't care what project you have, somewhere you might have some problems that you have to work with the owner. So that's life, you know?
Yes, I understand that point, but you're not really working with the owners here.
Well, you'll be working with the owner and the company, the group that's current.
So, Mr. Braker, my question is, how does the county enforce these conditions?
Just like any other condition, if they were a violation, you would issue a notice of violation. They could appeal that to the Board of Zoning Appeals and then to Circuit Court, and it would be an enforcement matter, just like any other zoning enforcement matter.
I don't know, and just like Mr. Tomlin, Mr. Jett said, we got this information in and some other information's come in and none of us has had time to review it. I would love to be able to review all this information first before I can make a decision. I'm just uncomfortable. It's just a bit like grabbing a rattlesnake by the tail right now, and I know I'm gonna get bit.
And we also got an email today which had a little difference in terms of financial compensation, so to speak.
Yeah, that's all, just came in today. And it does not give us time to review it.
I mean, there were some good points in there.
Yeah, there's good points in there. Our next board meeting.
Well, I think you can't make that decision. People gotta go ahead and vote on it and get it out the way, and then you can move to something else. The simplest, I'm ready to vote for what we have on the table.
So you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we grant this request with the conditions that Philip is named and for the solar system, solar energy facility.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
No, I'm not seconding, but I'd like Mr. Long to be aware, and if you make this motion, you know how to support it and it fails, he cannot reapply for this for one year.
I was gonna confirm that statement, just to make sure. I was gonna make sure.
Well, that's right.
That is true in this case, isn't it?
Is that true in this case?
Yeah.
It's true in any case on a public hearing, so, Colonel. All right, second's not required. Is there any other discussion?
Wait, hold on. Let me withdraw that, because I sure don't want to hurt the chances. So what we can do is review the material and bring it up for the next board meeting. Would that be in order?
I'm sorry, will you...
Review the material that we have been given and bring it up for the next board...
Yes, sir, yes, sir. You could delay action until the next board meeting and take it up then at that time. Might allow for further discussions and review of materials that have been received or submitted. Yes, sir.
Could staff also see about getting some example of a siting agreement too?
I'd like to know about that.
See what it looks like? And if that's gonna require a public hearing, almost have everything at one time, so we don't do this number. That's not fair to an applicant, so. But just see what we can do, and frankly, if we need a special meeting between now and next meeting, I'm not objected to that. But I think we need to see what a siting agreement would have.
Have you ever done a siting agreement?
We actually, I think it's in the hands of the county, not made its way into you, but there is a form of, there is a siting agreement in there.
Well, we need to see some of the, we don't need to see the limbs, but we need to at least see the forest.
Totally agree, and then you're at all at the same time. I respect that and make sure that you guys have all the information available, so that you can make a decision.
You could have that in our hands before the next meeting.
And I can tell you, I want it to be approved, a siting agreement be approved, not just reviewed.
Right.
I'm not gonna, reviewing is, that's, my quote-unquote liability requires an approval.
I think we need to have a decommission plan.
Well, they got one, but it may need to be fleshed out.
You can modify it if you want.
And some of the things that were presented at the board meeting, very good, like the game fence. I think she, I asked in reference to my question, like seven feet.
I thought she said it was seven foot.
Seven, eight feet, because deer, they'll, a four-foot has a problem for them. But some of those things that were suggested, if they could be fleshed out too.
100%, you guys need all the information.
I have a question on one of your proffers. Can I ask you about a proffer? I can, that question, but...
Yes, sir.
You had in a, it's a, 15,000 gallon tank shall be installed and connected existing artisan wheel on safety. That is great, and you're not talking about that. Will a fire pump be included?
Yes, absolutely.
1,000 gallon per minute?
Don't know the exact, but...
Okay. I just didn't list the pump, but I did, sure, thank you.
Anything less than that, Ronnie, would defeat the purpose. I said, that was a good question, because anything less than 1,000 GPM would defeat the purpose.
I guess you'd go on Fire Chief, and that's what he recommended.
All right, any other discussion? No other discussion? So do we have a motion to carry it over?
With the motion fully withdrawn?
He withdrew it.
He withdrew it.
Yeah, well, maybe that we can carry this one to...
Carry it over.
What is it, October?
October meeting? That's what the, 10th?
13th.
8th?
October the 13th.
13th. All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All who is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, that document that was referenced earlier for the siting agreement is in board docs for the board.
All right, it's in board docs.
Which particular attachment?
It's titled, it's titled "Info from Community Power Group."
All right, we were getting so many atta, I think we got 15 attachments coming today, I have no way I could keep up.
All right. Now, let's move on to other hearings here. We have a request tonight by Washington Auto Club Incorporated, owners and rights and companies for zoning change. Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, sir. It's a request by Washington Auto Club Incorporated, owners and rentson companies incorporated applicants for change in zoning district classification to rezone a three-acre portion of Tax Map Parcel 42, double circle 1, 174B.
Quiet, ladies and gentlemen. Hold on, Mr. Jett. Let's give everybody a couple minutes to get...
No problem. There is a request by Washington Auto Club Incorporated, owners and rentson companies incorporated applicants for change in zoning district classification to rezone a three-acre portion of Tax Map Parcel 42, double circle 1, 174B from Agriculture A1 to Business General B1 in order to construct and operate a 2,640 square foot retail building and associated parking lot. The aforementioned Tax Map Parcel is located on Route 200, Jesse Pomp more Memorial Highway, approximately one-third of a mile north of the Comico Church, Virginia. Tax Parcel 42, double circle 1, Lot 174B is comprised of 11.5353 acres. The tax parcel is located in the Comico Magisterial District. At the July 21st, 22nd, 2022 planning commission meeting, the planning commission voted to recommend the rezoning, to allow rezoning from A1 to B1.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. All right, is anyone here from the Washington Auto Club tonight? Yes, would you like to come up and speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I do have a couple of printouts I'd like to share with y'all.
Yes, sir, you're welcome. And would you state your name, please?
Yes, sir, I will. It's John Parker with Rentson Companies. I'm also on the sign-in sheet to speak.
Okay.
So I don't need to come up twice. Rentson Companies, we're located in West End, North Carolina, 2075 Juniper Lake Road. We've been in business about 20 years. Great company, put God first in everything we do. I've been with the company about seven years. I'm a development project manager. And we're pleased to bring you this project tonight. We did a lot of due diligence on this property prior to bringing this to planning board and to work tonight. The packet I've put in front of you, the first couple pages, you've probably already seen, is the application. We are requesting 11 and a half, well, three acres of an 11-and-a-half acre agricultural, agricultural rezoned property to be rezoned to B1. The remainder of that property, the owner's intent is to donate that to a local church, which we felt very noble. So we want to mention that. Skipping through to the first colored page, just perspective of where this is in relation in the county on Jesse Pomp more highway, it's about midway up Highway 200. The next page, and I apologize, it's gonna be a little dark. This just shows the outline of the parcel itself, or the portion of the property, the three acres that we're looking to subdivide out of that property. If you'll notice, during our due diligence on this property, we're looking for, you know, to blend in to the surrounding environment. We don't want to put a commercial business in an area where there's not already existing commercial. So if you can see the site here is outlined in the site aerial, just north of that's Glen Lestrange landscaping and then a machine shop and a garden shop and a couple of non-residential commercial uses in that direct vicinity. Skipping to the next sheet, this is street view of the property, just to give you perspective if you hadn't had a chance to get out to the site. We're right beside Glen Lestrange landscaping, the property itself. Partially clear, but mostly wooded area, a contoured site kind of falls from the road and falls off to the rear of the site. And then another photo, just another perspective of the site from ground level. And that was us at the site visiting the site, taking photos from the road. We always like to look at them first. And then this is the proposed exceptional site plan. You can see that one of the things that we took into consideration when looking at the site is the access. We know this is a busy road. This store would be designed to serve that existing community. It's not a destination type of store, you know, a retail store of this size would be serving people going home or that live in that general vicinity. So it's not like a Walmart redrawn, people in from across county, you know, 15, 20 miles. Typically, our expectations, like 14 to 16 cars per hour would be visiting a store like this. So it'll tend to create a lot of additional traffic burden. But in consideration for the traffic in the area, working via T or V dot, we're gonna put a full taper turn lane into the site, so it'll help stack cars to reduce any traffic congestion in that area. So we're definitely working close with them. Additionally, for the remnant parcel, we're gonna actually allow them to access off our entrance. Additionally, for the remnant parcel, we're going to actually allow them to access off our entrance, so we can minimize, if you'll see in that site plan, you can kind of see the stub and a little flagpole coming back, so that'll only create one entrance to this area and not create another driveway to, uh, you know, impose any more traffic burden. So, uh, we'll share that entrance with that remnant parcel to the rear, um, or whatever church group, uh, activities that they decide to, to do out there, I'm sure they'll bring that to you next. Then this next slide just shows that, that commercial corridor, and, and that's what we were looking at when we were selecting the site, we wanted to see, you know, if this was a good fit, a, a, a good area that had already existing commercial, uh, growth in the area. You can kind of see that, uh, that commercial corridor that's formed in that area. And, uh, the last few slides are just a, a photo of some of the existing commercial in the area, that their facades, so we, we take that into consideration in design, which we'll go through during the civil, uh, design process if we were successful in rezoning, um, to incorporate some of the same characteristics that we're seeing in the community. Um, if, if it be hardy, you know, maybe a brick knee wall, kind of soften that look, a lot of landscaping, we want to try to add to the community and add it, make it an amenity and not an eyesore, so, uh, we do put a lot of attention and focus to that aspect of it. Uh, we did see a mix of hardy siding and, and brick in the area, so I think our plan is to use the same, the same facades, the same features. So, but that is it in general, I know y'all have had a, a long night at this point, so I do appreciate your time, we would love to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any board members have any question, questions for Mr. Parker?
Yeah, how many nights will this, a day, will this be open, will it be open every day?
Labor days then?
Uh, sorry, every day.
Oh, sorry, yes, sir, uh, my, my assumption would be open every day, except for maybe the major holidays, uh, but a typical schedule will be Monday for some days, sir. And, uh, their hours are typically, you know, nine to ten, you know, the little retail hour.
Okay, and you have alcohol beverages?
I can't speak to that part of it, that would be something that, and we're, we're a developer and builder, that the tenant would apply more separately, I believe that counties have their own separate regulations on, you know, beer sales, but typically we see, uh, small retail stores approach counties for those type of things, sir.
All right, have anything else with Slom? Mr. Brad? Mr. Tomlin?
Uh, the taper that you're showing, is that going to be within the existing right of way, or y'all going to purchase from other landowners that make the taper?
I'm forward to the engineer specifically on that, and again, this is conceptual, um, I don't know if I have the exact measurements of the right of way on hand right now. It's within the existing.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to be sure, because otherwise you'd have to purchase some land.
Yeah, we're, we're not opposed to helping out the neighbors there too.
The other question is, it's been raised, and obviously a lot of comments, are you prepared to name a possible tenant right now?
Um, not at this moment.
Okay, I don't know, that's, been asked, it's not required.
We, uh, another feature I did want to mention, and I apologize for, for jumping off topic, is, uh, we are going to manage our stormwater on site. I know runoff is always a, is a topic of concern, and, uh, we'll be treating our stormwater on site as well as wastewater management.
Anything else?
Yes.
All right. Parker, I don't have anything for you either, so, but, uh, after we have the public hearing, we may have some more questions for you.
I'll be here.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, both.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter now. Our first person to speak is James Penny.
James Penny, one twenty five River Hill Road, Eastville, David, and gentlemen. Ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet of facility is not a small building. I mean, everybody in here has got an idea what that is, but it's basically five times the size of my house. And when you have that, you're going to have additional traffic, regardless of what type of store. As best I can understand, because I did attend the, uh, the meeting with, uh, the planning commission, it is to be a convenience store type of business, okay? So you're going to have a lot of traffic in and out, fourteen to sixteen per hour, uh, and since that meeting, as I've driven past various types of, that type of store, I've seen a lot more than fourteen to sixteen in, at most of the facilities. And this is everywhere from Whitestone all the way down to Gloucester, okay? And even several stores here in Northhamlin County and Lancaster. The other thing that I'm concerned about, as I live on Route two hundred, uh, off of two hundred, is the traffic and turn lanes. They're saying that for the width of the lot, they're going to be putting in an additional turn lane, if I understand, I haven't seen the drawings, uh, I'm not privy to them. But if that's the case, if a vehicle goes to turn out of that property, to turn up towards the Wacomico Church and Remo Road intersection, they're going to be looking at vehicles that come through Wacomico Church, and basically there's a slight decline. A car, a vehicle can be hidden in there while they're looking the other way. And they've got to pull across the turn lane, so I question that as to how well that's going to work, okay? The second thing that comes into play is that V dot wound up having to change the location of fifty five mile an hour speed limit initiation, because you've come through Wacomico Church at forty miles an hour. And then you hit fifty five zone. We all know that people hit fifty five, they're doing fifty five at that speed limit sign, which is right in front of Glen Lester's property, okay? The third item is that there's already three convenience type stores in, between Lancaster and Northhamlin County. We have two in Northhamlin County, plus there's another one in Kilmarnick. There's the Crab Shack there that I believe is handling some type of food stuffs, food for thought. Uh, and then comes the aspect of supply vehicles and supply trucks pulling in and out of traffic. A ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot store is going to take some tractor trailers from time to time to bring in a load of food stuffs, you see what goes in and out of restaurants, okay? So now you're having to come off of two hundred, go into the lot, and pull back out again. And I'm questioning, when we're at two hundred, do you expand it to put in a turn and or de-acceleration lanes? Because if you're coming up the hill, you're going to have to de-accelerate going into Wacomico Church to turn into this place. That's a question, how are they going to handle that? They're going to drop the speed limit down to twenty five, way down at the bottom of the hill coming up? I don't know. So there's, there are a lot of questions there that I've got in my mind, and frankly, at this point in time, I haven't seen enough answers to be able to, if I were in your chair, I wouldn't be able to vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. All right, next person is John Parker, but, uh, you've already spoke, unless you want to speak again? All right. Uh, next person is Kenny Pinkert.
I think he got.
He's not here now. Next one is Ricky Haney, he's not here. Next one is PJ Haney.
He's not here.
Gone?
They're all gone. Next is Alice Imber.
I signed it because I came to a meeting, I didn't sign up to speak.
Okay, all right. All right. All right, is no one else on the sign up sheet, or any, would anybody else like to speak on this issue? All right, please come on up.
Pamela Hagie, two one two Shep's Point Drive and Rebuild. I just want to make one note about whatever store this is, if it does happen to be another Dollar Tree or Dollar Store, those big yellow signs aren't really in keeping with our community, I don't think. So maybe if there's a way, I hear them saying, the building will be, you know, kind of blended in, so I'm hoping the signage, that we can do something about signage with, as these new stores come in, to be less bright at night and imposing in a community, like the one in Burgess. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sarah?
Okay, I will speak.
All right.
Alice Imber, forty type or circle, Wacomico Church is really. I would say, because we go down Route two hundred all the time, that's our road, to go from the bridge, the great Wacomico Bridge, onto Kilmarnick, that is a very busy road. And you must, in order, if you're going any of the directions toward Remo or Brown Store Road, or Kilmarnick, which is where most of the traffic is going, that is already a very busy intersection. And so that, it is people coming from four directions, and that's just down the, what a block, maybe down from this parcel that they're talking about. I would imagine additional traffic at that place would be a very bad idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Bradford, Bradford Vaughn, Wacomico Church resident. To augment the last two speakers, I've been privy to witness, uh, three automobile accidents at that intersection, which is spoken of, just within the past year or so. So, yeah, it's busy. My thoughts is that the, uh, Wacomico Church area, it already has a retail service in the community, it services fresh groceries, meats, dairy, seafood, et cetera, produce. And Collins is one, it's locally owned, family operated, and unlike a Dollar General, Dollar Store, box store, it's in our community, and it would put, like all those major chain stores, could easily put a, a family business out of business. Wacomico Church is not a food desert, we, within ten miles or less, we had access to several grocery stores, and Burgess, Lively, Kilmarnick, Barnum, Eastville, were saturated. Residents of Wacomico Church want to keep our, uh, area, our commercial center, and there's small, locally owned, independent shops, restaurants, and businesses, as we have now. And we do not need, or want a, a box chain store, as I said, we're saturated. And I can't help but notice that Northhamlin County has existing vacant commercial locations throughout the county, passed over, doesn't getting here. And I ask that we might consider repurposing existing buildings or reutilizing abandoned properties that we already have, as opposed to changing the zoning of an agricultural parcel, when we already have retail. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, would any, anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right. Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? We have many people online. Nobody raised their hand yet? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak? No one? All right. I will close the public hearing now, and I'll put the matter before the board.
I think it would be kind of interesting to hear what, what V dot have to say, I think that. Whether they'd like to do a study or just to give some feedback.
All right.
Well. That's just my opinion.
They haven't done a study on the intersection at two hundred and six oh nine either.
Yeah, we had a lot of accidents.
And there's been a lot of accidents there, and we, we've raised that repeatedly, so you can ask all your studies you want.
Yep, so you're saying good luck.
Good luck.
Yeah, I, I agree with the majority of the citizens that level all that, this, this is a bad idea, I mean, it's dangerous. And there is dangers for traffic, and there's a lot of traffic. We have a lot of traffic over there already.
But can you deny a man's request to use his land because you think traffic might be? I mean, there's a lot of places that he goes up, and if you were to use traffic, it's up to V dot to control the traffic with turn lanes and stuff.
Well, they haven't.
You still, well, that ain't, that ain't my problem. But you're going to start denying businesses the right to build something somewhere because you don't like the way the traffic happens, six oh nine's a quarter mile, if not more, from that.
No, we, we, it's a big problem over there, V dot hasn't straightened it out.
Well, we don't know what business is going there, all we know is going to be, they want to rezon from, uh, rezon from agriculture to two, two business. So that's the issue that we're looking at.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this rezoning.
All right.
A second.
I got a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion?
In looking at the zoning map that was given to us, there are a lot of properties, not even counting what, what the applicant gave us. You have numerous properties that have been zoned business. And I remember when Mervyn Weathers' boat fifteen, twenty years ago came before us and wanted two pieces of property, could be where Burton Cliffs are and the British Garden is, they wanted to rezone it to business for the possibility. But then if you also look at how a piece of property that is not zoned business, but is, has a whole lot more traffic issues than this piece would have Glen Lester's. Because you talk about, you got tractor trailer trucks coming out fully loaded, or coming in fully loaded. And that's an issue, and then you look, there's one little piece about a quarter mile further down toward Burgess that's zoned business. Now I know that why that is, that was for Betty Weiss and Christopher's to have a sign put up. But there's, for those who haven't looked at the zoning map, if they wanted to, they could, if they could acquire from the property owner, right behind and joining the Episcopal Church, there's a piece of property zoned industrial. Now the reason that was zoned industrial, because Driscoll Pittman was on the board to supervise at the time. But there is, it is a multiple use in this area. If you look at the, the village plan, which was approved by this board back in ninety six, this area is in the support area. So it's consistent with our zoning plan in the past, it's consistent with current zoning practices, and again, this is just to make a decision about to rezone from A one to B one. And yes, they could put a Dollar General, and yes, some people don't like that, but this is just a question. Now I know I can also tell you this, I constantly hear it, y'all don't allow any business in this county. Well, I'm going to vote to do this one.
Well, you're talking about this tractor trailer truck, there's a lot more tractor trailers going Glen Lester's every day than will ever go in this store.
That's right.
He has trucks running all day long, coming back from dogs on the wheels going in and out.
And those eight to ten wheelers don't come up fast either.
All right, any other comments? Tommy, did you, you made the motion?
I made the motion, Ronnie seconded, and I'll add one thing. Frankly, I think if we did not approve this, we would be arbitrary capricious.
All right.
And, uh, we would lose that case if it's deemed to be arbitrage, we can be totally wrong, but if we're arbitrary and capricious, we lose. And we've got zonings all over this place here.
All right. No other comments?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parker. All right. The next item is a, is a consideration to the amendment, and I'll let Mr. Tadlock take care of that one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You want to hold on one second, Mr. Tadlock?
All right, next item we have is to consider an amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. This budget amendment is for the purpose of transferring from fiscal year twenty two to twenty three, and appropriating monies from the American Rescue Plan Act Federal Funds, ARPA funds. ARPA funds. The ARPA carryover from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three is in the amount of six hundred fifty thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-three cent, and the ARPA new funding, uh, just received is in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, seven, six fifty-six, excuse me, for a total of one million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, zero forty, uh, and seventy-three cent. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All you have. All right, any board members have any comments before we open the public hearing? Any comments, gentlemen? If not, I will open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign-up sheet, but would anyone like to speak on this issue? Anyone like to speak on this issue?
Just say yes.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? All right, anyone else in the, anybody in the virtual world like to speak? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing and the matter's before the board.
I move that we approve this.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other comment?
Yes. It does not involve real estate tax dollars, but it is still taxpayer dollars.
Yeah.
I just want to make that, and this will be paid for by a generation to come. But it is not county taxpayers, but it is still your tax dollars. Making sure that's crystal clear.
All right. No other comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? All right, motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all we have on our agenda tonight.
Mr. Chairman, the items for closed meeting.
Oh, sorry. All right, Mr. Tadlock, we have items for closed meeting.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the, the two positions for the sanitary district, uh, for the wastewater operator maintenance positions, um, one for, the offer the positions to Tim Lady and Emily Spray, and that would be both salaries in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five thirty-two, fifty-seven.
All right, can I have a motion?
No movement.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? All right, Mr. Tadlock, you have anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I have some.
All right.
I like to move with EBB roof.
We've got to do something with that.
Yeah, and the rec, he made the recommendation, actually went with the lowest price, didn't he? The low slope?
I believe so, yes, sir.
But we still, but we would have to then put it out for bid.
We, we would still, actually, the way we had the, that bid document was, um, there were two phases. The first phase was to examine it, and the second phase was, uh, for his assistance in bidding that out.
I, I move, we move with the low slope to start the bidding process to get it started.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
It's, he's made a recommendation for the cheapest alternative, and that's what he put on his host. I'm, we would go forward with it.
All right. No other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? All right, motion passes. Anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any board, any board member have anything else? All right, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight, and we will see you back next month.